Really?
Okay.
He came in and just threw it all on the chair.
Afternoon, let's call this September 13th special meeting of orderman, treasurer, maybe we have a roll.
President Smith?
Yes. President.
Ms. Wick?
Present.
Dr. Goodwin?
Here.
Dr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Lacy?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Reina?
Present.
Seven present.
Yes.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as far as.
All right.
Right.
Supposed to say, definitely I would wait for the president to say please stand.
Chris was wanting to get that pledge.
It's 2:05.
All right, we have the presentation, Dr. Lawrence.
We do. We are ready. Public Information Office, this is exciting. The Board of Education agreed to give us the funds to revamp our website last year and after a year of research and well, not a year, several, several months of research, looking at websites all over the country, I think we have one of the best websites in the world. So I would like to see it today and we can unveil it to the public.
Perfect. We would agree with that, Dr. Lawrence. So to start, thank you for allowing us to present today and for anyone watching our recording who doesn't know me, my name is Alex Kincaid. I'm the Director of our Public Information Office. Today, I'm going to give you a little bit of background about our research and planning for the new website and then I'm going to throw it over to Catapult Creative Collective, who actually redesigned the website for us. So to start off. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Oh, no, I didn't know. Okay, so to start off, Dr. Lawrence gave us a challenge last year to redesign our website to really represent this new era of DPS. We had a new interim superintendent, new guiding principles, a lot of momentum, and we wanted our outward reflection to the community to represent that. In addition to this refreshed, modern look that we wanted, we wanted to create student-centered school pages that allowed schools to more easily showcase their strengths and their unique identity. If you remember from our last website, each school only had one singular page and so that's not a lot of space for them to really showcase what makes them special. So that was a big part of what we wanted to set out to do. Research and preparation. We did a lot of research and preparation to make this website a reality. We had 26 website meetings in total, 16 of those were just internal. We met with departments, we met with principals, we were talking to them about what they envisioned their page to be. We talked about what they needed, what features they wanted, how we could build the website to really suit what they needed. And that way, you know, when the website went live, it was set up the way they wanted it, they were involved in the process and that really helped a lot. In addition, as Dr. Lawrence mentioned, we reviewed at least a dozen websites, probably even more, from urban schools, suburban schools, from all over the country. And we were looking at what features they had that we thought we could implement to support DPS along with their menu organization. We really wanted to bring the best of the best features into this website and I know many of you have already seen it, I think we really did a lot of that, but you'll hear more about that today. Lastly, we shared a website survey with parents, staff, students, and community members to gather their feedback about the website. And I'm going to share some of those findings with you now. So the main reason users were accessing our old website, they told us they were looking for who to contact for a specific purpose. They were looking for district information such as menus, calendars, the bell schedule, et cetera, or they were looking for information about school programs. Their favorite aspects of the old website, they liked the staff directory, they liked the photos, and they liked our search function. The least favorite aspects, they thought our menu was not organized in a way that made it easy for them to find certain things. And they thought our school webpages were too uniform and didn't allow schools to showcase their uniqueness, which is also what we thought. A few more key findings from our survey, 90% of those who responded said there should be more information about school programs and offerings on school pages. If you go to a school page, they want to know what makes them stand apart, what academic offerings, extracurricular, they wanted to know more about schools. In addition, 65% of respondents said that the menu needed to be easier to navigate. So those were two key things for us setting out. In addition, some other comments and feedback we got, there was a desire for a simple, modern design and they wanted more photos of students and more videos showcasing our schools. And so I'm going to turn it over to Catapult now, but you're going to see how we incorporated many of these suggestions throughout.
Hello, thank you for having us today. My name is Matthew Sliver and I'm the President and CEO of Catapult Creative. We are a local agency just down the street from here. So first I would like to say thank you for allowing us to do this work with you. This means a lot to us. My daughter started her first year at Stivers this year as a dual magnet. So it means a lot to my family personally that we were able to engage in this work and improve upon what we had built six years ago. This is Rachel Jenk- or Rachel Huber, rather, my business partner and our Director of Client.
Relations.
Relations. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to her. Thank you.
Alrighty. So I want to walk you guys a little bit through the basics of our process so you can see kind of where we started and where we went. So for this website, we did over 314 wireframes, which is a black and white blueprint of everything from tech specs to strategic user experience layout to utilizing past user experience data for improvements, how Alex was touching on, as well as content improvements. So the website itself ended up being close to 400 pages. So almost every single page that you see was wireframed and strategized before it ever went to design and coding. In the step-two design, we looked at color palettes, graphics, typography, the design of the layout, the prototype design, and the photography. We'll touch on photography a little bit later, but photography was a big, big point of why we were doing this redesign, so we really wanted to feature the different students. Once we get into the website, we go into the obvious coding of the website, then we go into SEO and we did quite a lot of accessibility modifications for this website. So ADA accessibility. This DPS has 35 languages and 54 countries represented. So we wanted to make sure that not only is it accessible to the standards of when we started the project, but going forward. So your website is WCAG 2.1 AA certified, which is the highest accessibility rating that you can have currently. The website also, so the website is accessible, but it also utilizes an additional plugin for accessibility called Accessiby. And when we go into looking at the website, I'll show you kind of the different things that it can do. Accessiby also looks at the website on a daily basis and audits it for accessibility needs. So the unique school pages, each of the schools now has a microsite within the larger website. So from custom color palettes, each school has their own photography gallery, branded individuality, and the branding is mixed with DPS's overall branding. So as you can see from what we're kind of showing you is even though all the schools have different colors, they all have a similar look and feel with their uniqueness showing through. Want to talk photos?
Yeah, so in the last website, we did have some actual photos of students, teachers, and educators. But there was also mixed in there with a bunch of random stock photography. So this was a big part. We want people to see their families and their students reflected in the website themselves. So all of the photography, that you'll be able to tell, is actually students, parents, educators. And as you can see, if you go through the website, I think that all of the photography is top-notch. Like almost on the level of you might think that it is a stock photo, but they are actually photos of our students and educators.
So the design, we obviously took inspiration from DPS's branding. Throughout the website, you'll see different elements of, for instance, what they're showing you in this image is the, let's say the horizon of the sun in your logo is featured in the different web elements on the site. We pulled assets from the logo, both in an abstract and concrete way, such as the arch. There's custom gradients on each aspect of the site, a refined color palette for accessibility. The blue and yellow had to change very slightly just for being able to see by different visual impairments. So we've got refined color palette, fonts, and general user experience elements and features. Without further ado, let's look at it. So we've got a very, very robust language tool on here for all these different languages. We made sure that all the languages that are represented at DPS are indeed in this plugin. Alex, if you don't mind pressing thank you. So all of these different accessible features are available. So whether you're vision impaired, we have seizure-safe protocols, we have ADHD-friendly cognitive disabilities, keyboard functions for different motor.
This is as good as we can get.
Yeah, it's very robust.
Yeah.
As you go down, if you're colorblind, you can toggle on and off different colors, you can see everything. It's fully accessible by different screen readers. You can also mute sounds as you just heard the chat make a noise. There's a reading guide, so it goes on and on, but I think this plugin is very top of its class. We also have an AI bot on here so that if parents, students have questions, it indexes the entire website and pulls that information for them. And if it is not able to answer a question, it directs them to the various schools or the main info line.
We're also going to be using this information after about a quarter of it actually intaking to see if there's any content on the website that we have missed to make it easier for parents or whomever has been asking questions to it. So we'll actually be using this real-life data to improve the website going forward.
And the bot is an ever-evolving entity, so if parents are asking for a question that's not represented, you'll be able to train the bot further to answer those.
Yep.
Let's go to the board page. We've got various bios, various committees for the different board members. Something that's nice about this page is it looks really good on mobile and it really condenses the different bios so that regardless if different peoples are longer or shorter than the other, they all kind of marry nicely together.
Enrollment, yes.
This is my favorite page because I think it makes something complex very simple and easy to navigate. Do you mind clicking some of those dropdowns? So parents and families can schedule enrollment right on here. All the different languages are accessible and the different forms. Makes it a very easy one, two, three-step process. That would be wonderful.
We said Horace Mann and Stivers are the ones that look up. Before you scroll down too much, scroll up right here, we've got this kind of middle navigation.
So they all have a similar look and feel, but the colors are obviously branded to each school. Each of the schools are able to put in their various quick links, lunch menus, each has a photo gallery of each school. Various mission vision statements. Yes, each calendar is unique to each school, but it also pulls in the district-wide events as well. Be good.
The school with the video banner eventually also.
Great.
Be good. Yeah, without further ado, what can we answer for you?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll open it up to the board if there's any questions, comments. Looks really good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Definitely appreciate it.
The process of enrollment.
Yeah, definitely.
So there are two enrollment pages, a K-12 and a preschool. And the format of this just makes it much easier to understand than our last page. They pulled out these little side numbers so it can really consolidate a lot of information and they can see the follow-up. And you can really tell, hey, first, here's what I've got to do, then I'm going to do this, and then you can schedule your appointment here at the bottom. There's also down here, you know, finding your school, information about homeschool withdrawal, special.
Do you want to click the schedule and appointment too? Because I think that's. Go in person or virtual?
Yeah, in person, virtual. And this is actually, this is already present, this is Cruz's new enrollment, but this is where you would go to schedule like the virtual.
Fantastic.
Anything else?
Down here.
Good one.
Yes, thank you. The website definitely looks significantly more modern, like we're trying to be in the 2000 range. I like that. Appreciate you guys getting us out to early 2000s and into close to 2024. A couple of questions on, I know I went through the district site and I saw that we do have the different departments, but on the individual school sites, I see that they aren't linked to the athletic pages? Or they don't have anything like that?
For, so we're in the process, athletics, I don't know if they know more than me at this point, but there are going to be individual athletic school pages, their own website. So Dunbar Athletics, you know, every school is going to have their own, every high school.
Will it be linked to the page though for that person or is it a step out?
Once they're up and running, that can definitely be a button that we add very easily.
And now for non-athletic activities, where would those fall out?
I can show you.
How do you find out what this school offers me? Like what other type of things is a, if you want your child to be involved? I'm on Thurgood's site right now.
So athletic school programs, activities here, where you can click, go through, see what they have. And then other academics, they talk about the STEM program here, but our academics, the PTE school, we're going to talk about kind of their program. I know Belmont actually also has a very good club. Look, they even included contact if you want to get involved, that's where you reach out. Here's their. But this can constantly be updated. If they have new clubs or new activities, they can add them here. Okay, they have a bunch of CBT, NJRO, which is going to be our anxiety. So these are really customized that our schools need to watch for that.
Okay. I also think something that we didn't touch on as well is any element you see on this website can be duplicated by the DPS team and copied and expanded upon. Everything is coded so that it's all building blocks so that you don't technically need us every time you want to add a button or add a page. And we've been fully trained on updating it. There are certain elements we would need to go to Catapult for, for example, if we wanted to build a feature that doesn't exist. Right. But as far as day-to-day maintenance, that has and always has been PIL, so we're trained on maintaining it.
Okay. Question, I think this is more for you, Dr. Lawrence. This looks like, this is a lot of stuff on here. How many of these programs do we actually have at these schools? And I like how you said that Belmont has a link out for people, like if, I'm thinking from a parent perspective, if you wanted your child to get involved with that one. For the ones that don't have those linkouts, like what are we doing to make this something that is really usable by the end user and being able to get in touch? Like I want to find out more about these things, but they don't necessarily have a point of contact.
That's a great question. We're in the process of auditing all those programs. You are absolutely right. You see lists of partners and things and people and you ask yourself, is that really a thing? So on Monday morning at 7:30, we actually add that to our agenda. Lisa, mine and I are having our first principals meeting because all the chiefs and executive directors are out. We're back in chief mode and we will add that to the agenda in terms of auditing that, letting principals know we're going to do that. And also I think reviewing the website with them as well, because I'm sure they probably haven't had time to sit down and look at it.
That would be good. Can we get, may I add this to the list of report outs that I asked for? Can we get a follow-up on our end on what the turnout of was from that meeting? The meeting you just said that you guys are going to have to find out what was actually happening?
Yes.
Okay, final question for you. I think I found my answer right here. The social media, want to see that that's not clickable. What's going to be the process for getting these schools, the ones that have Facebook and Instagram or whatever they have linked to the page? And what's the timeline we're looking for for that?
Are there icons on it?
There's a social media piece, but it's not clickable at the moment. I'm on Thurgood still. Okay, well, yeah, just the one I'm on is not clickable, I guess.
Well, we can check into that. If they have social media, it puts down the problem, so we'll check on Thurgood's.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you guys, did a really good job. I mean, good to see it. I would say, I would like to see, this is more so our team, some more of the historical things from our schools. I do like the little blurbs that we have for there, but.
I will say the hardest part about that, where principals did not know the history and we tried to help, in some cases, help them find it. Certain schools, Thurgood, Stivers, they had their history, they knew it, that was no problem, but other schools, it was kind of difficult for them to figure it out. So that is kind of a work in progress there.
Okay, just as long as we continue to work on it since we've been open since the 1800s.
I will say if you have.
History page, not relying so much on the school, but history of Dayton Public Schools, talk about the schools that were here, there, and a new history toggle. It's so.
Find us some yearbooks, plenty of them out there, and you kind of get that information. I mean, it's a research project, but you're just going to want that richness to show the longevity of this district as well.
And as you mentioned, each school does have their own little history blur, but a district history page is something we could explore.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else?
I may? So a couple of things, this is a significant amount of work and I want to thank you for it. It looks fantastic. It is really, meets my expectations. I just wanted to thank you for a couple of things. First of all, is the accessibility options. It's really, really, really great in that regards. I really appreciate the language accessibility as well too, for all of our ELL families. And I just want you to know, as we've been going through this, I've been asking the Help Bot a bunch of different questions. And I just want you to know, so right away, the first question that I asked was, how do I volunteer in schools? And it gave me a fantastic list of ways that I go through that process. Then I Googled, then I searched what extracurriculars are available. And then Dr. Goodwin, I also, then I said extracurriculars at Dunbar. So I want you to know, it said right away, marching band, drone team, athletic activities, team sports, debate club. I will, anyway, fantastic tool. I really like it. That's going to be super helpful. Especially, you know, when constituents reach out to me and I don't know the answer right away. I can direct them to that or I can help them find the answer really quickly. So thank you so much.
And again, with the chatbot, we can feed it knowledge. We're in the process of learning how to do that so that we can tell it, if someone asks this, respond like this. And so we can kind of cater those responses over time.
Yeah, it's smart, but it will be significantly smarter the more information that it learns from. So the more people you can encourage to use it, the better it will be for all of us in helping it advance its intelligence.
Yeah, I think it answers a good stopgap in websites of if people get lost and they don't know where to go, that's something we can't track, right? But with this chatbot to really hone in on that, that's something we'll be able to see.
And eliminate their having to use the search feature. Like the search feature is really, really robust, but like if you use it, it will give you multiple things versus the AI will just like point you to the right answer, right? So we're very proud of that and the accessibility features. It admittedly is the biggest undertaking we've taken with accessibility. So it was very, very challenging, so thank you for acknowledging that. It is as good as accessibility can be as of today.
Yep.
Anything else?
I just want to say thank you because I went through this and I was just playing at work, shouldn't say that.
Playing at work?
Yeah, I was. I was at work and I was just going through this and it is so user-friendly that it's incredible. So I really want to commend you on it and thank you.
Thanks.
You learned a lot from the last one. That website was like this big and then it became this big by the end of it.
Yes.
So kind of like that stacked on top and pop at top and user experience, it's, people use websites all the same, right? Every single one of us uses the website exactly the same way, so it doesn't matter if this is a construction company or a public school district. People need to be able to find the information very, very quickly. And the added layer to that is these are parents that could be frustrated trying to find answers really, really quickly. And that was our challenge was how do we eliminate those roadblocks as they get through it? So to Alex and her team's credit, we can only be as good as the team that we're working with. And these folks that you have here, the one, their ability to update this website, they really can and they will be able to. That is money in my book. And the second piece is that they helped us find so much information and got us so much great feedback that without that, we wouldn't have got here, so.
Yeah, this website happened in six months, which is an insane timeline, but you guys have really made us able to do that by having everything ready.
So we want to thank you for having the great staff that we can work with and thank you all for allowing us to, you know, kind of spread our wings and try some things out.
Awesome. Now I know that Dr. Bailey is telling me he's busy at work, he's.
I have another quick question. What about people who have low literacy rates? Can we figure out some sort of accessibility text to speak?
Built in for that. There's a text to speak and there's also, it's called reading disabilities, so there is different toggles for that.
Okay, good, thank you.
If we find out any more, accessibility is really great and we'll keep it updated, but this is our benchmark for accessibility. So anything new that comes to us, we'll be in contact with Alex about things. And definitely, like, when it translates the language, it's lightning quick.
Yeah.
It is so, so fast.
Yeah, I can demonstrate a language.
Yeah, please do.
Oh, let's do that right now.
You didn't even see it.
Already updated.
Nice.
Change it very easily right there and I think there are over, I don't know, several, 100 or more languages.
Yeah.
And we did check to make sure all of our top ones are.
Yep. We're very proud of this. This might be the best website that we've built. So again, thank you for allowing us to just really try some things out and try to make this as good as we possibly could make it. We really could not have done that without the team, you know. The team at DPS is by far and large one of the best groups we've ever worked with, so.
We think so.
No doubt.
I know, I'm telling you right now, I know.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Next, before we move on to it, it wasn't on here, but I definitely wanted to check if there was any bargaining units that would wish to speak while we're here. Do not see any. And also if there was anybody from the.
Got one. You got one.
Who said we do have one?
Yes.
Okay. Thought I saw my guy out there. Might as well. So all your people are just leaving.
Oh, well, you know, they're working right now. They're a lot of work. See, you see how they work right there?
You said people are working?
A lot of work.
We not even love them.
Kind of work there.
Okay. And then, so do we have anybody from the public that would wish to speak? We're going to speak, we're going to executive later.
I'm sorry.
Anybody from the public that would wish to speak before we go to executive session? As I said, didn't want to speak here. Pursuant to section 121.22G2 of the Howard Vice Code, I move this board going to executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the appointment and employment of a public employee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving second and questions? Saying now, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, she'll be right back. But the record shows the Board of Education and the city school, this is just completing the executive session, but we should consider the appointment and employment of public employee. I move that we return to our review session. May I have a second?
Second.
Secondly?
Mr. Lacy, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following administrative appointments for a vote.
So move.
Then moving second and questions?
Yes, but I got to get to the sheet first. Give me one second, please.
Okay. Any other questions while Dr. Goodwin's preparing her questions?
When you go from mailroom clerk to.
Coordinator.
To a coordinator. To a coordinator, does, I mean, it just, I, is the mailroom clerk, is that really not just like a, it's not like a starting position or something? Or I don't, or?
So he used to work in nutrition services. He came over to the mailroom. By the way, that is a really important position. We need to post it right away because when he is out, nothing, we can't get anything mailed. So he's going back to nutrition services.
Okay. So was he a coordinator before or was he just-
No, no. Before, he was not a coordinator. It was something below a coordinator. So he's going back as a, as a coordinator. They're adding a fourth coordinator.
I don't know. Would it be possible to show that, what rate they're coming from and going to? Because I mean, just, just to show that we're not like doubling somebody's salary or something like that?
Yeah, I definitely think that's do, no, I think we can do that.
Okay.
Do you want that before we vote on it?
No, I, no, I don't. Just in the future, going forward, that's all.
Okay. Question on, because I know that we are, actually, I'm gonna bring it up later about our salary scale because there are some issues with the one we approved. Is it possible for us, like, what were the rates that these salaries were based off of?
I am gonna take a stab at that.
I think this are from the current year, not the appropriate one.
So from 2020, the last one we had?
2024.
Okay.
It looks like it.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's seventy-one, one-eight, one-one-eight is an old one.
All right. And that's all, can you can just confirm, just give me real quick that all four of those?
Uh, I know four is old, I mean, four is old, five is old. Yeah, three, four, four, five and six are old. I cannot. Yeah, and three is old, three is old.
Was that all of them? You just kind of, you're starting, just throwing out numbers?
All, all of them. Jesse Watts, too.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following certified appointments for vote.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any questions?
I have one request, actually. And I made this request in finance the other, yesterday as well, in addition to what Mr. Lacy asked to be put on the last one. But can we start putting on the HR agenda, too, the amount of positions that we have budgeted and where we are when you guys put these recommendations? I just want to know if we're giving you things that are over the budget or if we're within them. Does that make sense to you all? Okay? And can we have that starting the next meeting?
As in Tuesday?
That's correct.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes. So the floating substitute, is that just a daily sub in those buildings?
Uh, the floating substitute is because we have one, two, yes, we have one, two, three, four, don't quote me in this, maybe five teachers who are getting ready to have babies, getting ready to go out. So we got to figure-
It feels super inappropriate just to say.
I mean, they're gonna be on maternity leave.
That sounds, that sounds so much better. They just about to have baby. Come on, man.
Okay. I apologize to all the folks who- Right. I apologize to all the teachers who are getting ready to have a baby. They're gonna be out on maternity leave.
You just said it again.
I wanted to clarify.
Some more sensitive way to be excited.
My next question is, one of these is going from a long-term sub gifted to long-term sub art.
Which number is that?
B twenty-two. B twenty-two.
Valerie Betts. I don't know about that. I'd have to ask Lisa or, you know anything about that, Dr. Davis, Ms. Minor? Valerie Betts, long-term sub, horseman, gifted.
Is there someone going into gifted?
Mr. Waffle, while she's checking, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The B twenty-three, Ludlow to Ludlow, we have math happening in Ludlow?
That means he's probably part of the curriculum team, Ms. Shee's team.
Man, also says he's going from the same position to the same position.
Is that correct?
Dr. Goodwin, can I talk into that one?
Yes, sir.
On, on there, the salary of that, I don't know what that role is, but on the salary schedule for a specialist, that is about thirty-five thousand dollars more.
Any other questions? I'll wait for those answers.
I do have one, on a correction.
Okay.
Kind of, can someone just explain to me, line B twenty-seven, did we make a mistake in their experience or something? Just how that change happened?
Yes, that was the-
You gotta come to the mic. They can't hear you. We can ask them to give you a mic to sit at the thing. That way you can-
You're fine. Apologies.
Um, yes, ma'am. That was an error in typing. They entered the seventy-three instead of the fifty-three and so we're correcting that typo.
Okay. Thank you.
So was, and to piggyback on that, was that employee overpaid and now has to repay?
They have not been overpaid. We caught it, the, we caught it and informed the payroll office, that communication piece, so that that did not occur.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for Chief Davis while she's at the mic?
Just the follow-up on those items we already asked about.
Yes, ma'am. I was looking into that.
Okay. Can we, can we pull that one?
B twenty-three?
B twenty-three. So you just know it's correct?
I just asked the business to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
To investigate that.
Anything else? Now we are moved B twenty-three and for further investigation into that, are there any other questions on any other line items before we vote? All right. Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
My next recommendation, I recommend approval of the following classified appointments. So moved?
Second.
Just been moved in second. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Line C thirteen, location Ludlow, we have, we have truck drivers that are assigned to this building as well?
I'm working together with Dr. Jones. I see his face. Do you mind if I answer that with an unequivocal no? We do not.
Is that location incorrect then on C?
It is.
Okay. What would the correct location be?
Service building.
Can that be reflected, Ms. Kidd, or, who's over there? C thirteen? And if I could just put a request for Dr. Davis, not necessarily today, but to have an update on the pair of professionals and that process of ensuring that they have the proper credentials by the deadline set?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following classified exempt employees.
So moved?
Second.
Moving second. Any questions?
I do have a question, I have a comment and a question.
Okay.
On all of the adjuncts that we see on here, yesterday in finance, we discussed this and we're budgeted for forty-four adjuncts, but we have fifty-nine adjuncts. What does that do to us if we continue, if we approve in over what you guys budgeted? And I wanted to share with the rest of you guys on the board, since although you guys were not at finance with us yesterday.
It will make the budget over budget. And if we have money, we'll wait if there is money later on. So the board might amend the budget.
Okay. And then also, have these people, this says they started August fifteenth? To my knowledge, we've had a meeting since August fifteenth. Just interested on why this is coming to us so a month later.
And you're asking why are the adjuncts?
Why we are getting them a month later?
This is when it was given to me. I contacted Mrs. Minor trying to sort out where the adjuncts actually were. Received an email the other day, I think it was Wednesday, from the individual at Stivers with the list. And so this is when it was provided.
Remember you said the heads would roll?
I understand. However, after further, getting further information, this is a systemic issue. It's not something that can be attributed to one individual. That is just the culture here, that we send things when we send it or we don't send it at all. And then when we reach out for it, it's when we get the information. That's how we were given the information here, because we solicited it and then found out that none of them had been placed on the agenda. And so it's going to take some time to fix that practice. It's not an individual thing.
I, I, if I may interject, I, I don't think they started on the fifteenth, or maybe some of them, but the music ones-
According to Mrs. Whips, that's who we got the information from. She shared that they indicate the first day of school because some of them start on the first day and some of them don't. They submit time cards as they do the work, but they put them on there for the first day of school in case they have provided any type of tutoring or services to the students.
Because, yeah, I was told the, the music, at least the music ones, I know, they didn't start until well into this month.
Can I ask, out of the budgeted positions for adjuncts, all of these for Stivers?
Say that again.
So does any other building have adjunct staff?
Per what has been approved by the district, there is one other adjunct at Belmont. All of the adjuncts, the, all of the forty-four that we discussed in finance committee that have been budgeted for are at Stivers, forty-three are at Stivers, and there is one that was approved at Belmont.
I'm just curious on how this, if, if we have programs that go on these other buildings, Belmont, Dunbar, Thurgood Marshall, International Music Program, forty-four at Stivers, but then we just have one at one other high school. So is it? Yeah, I mean, that, that, that just doesn't make sense to me. On a stand side of Belmont, out of the other high school programs that have music programs and things like that, how many students are enrolled in those programs compared to students? Because out of all of the high schools, Stivers is the lowest enrollment building, but they have the most support. Meanwhile, the other buildings that have high enrollment don't have the same support. That's inequated to me.
So your, your statement is correct. We are currently, it's really high on our agenda. We're currently working on the schedule for Dr. Gill and Ms., Ms. Doolier currently working on the schedule for twenty-five, twenty-six. And we've, not in known history, been able to complete high school scheduling before students left to go home for the summer. And in doing that, we're working on how we, how we allocate resources. We're doing that now.
For next school year, not this current one. So this current one, Belmont, would just have one. Meanwhile, Stivers has forty-four. So as a district that has a equity problem, we continue the tradition of that with putting resources in one building.
I would say we move to, in this space, just, we rolled over what was there, given-
Nope, you've been here two years, as you said. You're one year to pass.
We rolled, we rolled over the considerations that were there before. And I think, I think I know adjunct planning and pathway planning and high school scheduling is, it's comprehensive and you should start when we're starting now. We should have started this when I started as an interim and we didn't.
So out of the fifty-nine that are on staff now, that means fifty-eight are at Stivers and one is at Belmont?
I believe that's what's indicated on the agenda in front of you.
Wow. Okay. That's all I have.
I have a question for you. I cannot recall where this is, but has this adjunct list been cross-referenced with the adjuncts that resigned earlier in the year? I only ask that because one of the names on here was a resignation that we took at the beginning of the year. Not, I mean, like, I think it was May or June or something.
I can't speak to what occurred prior to my arrival. I can share that I have not compared this list to whatever list that existed prior to. This is the list that I did verify just Wednesday of this week that is accurate.
Okay. If we do find that these individuals did resign, is that, do we have a, can I just request that we have active applications that they came back?
Could you please say that again?
I said if we do find, because I'm gonna just request that you compare this list, even if we approve it tonight, to the, the adjuncts from Stivers that resigned at the end of the school year. And if they are those ones, I just want to know, did we actually get applications for them to come back?
I don't receive any applications for-
So how did they even get here?
They, we received a list from Stivers of who these individuals are. There is no interview process or anything that comes through HR. I receive a list of individuals. I do not know the process for this. I do not know who interviews them or how they are selected. I just received the list and verified that that list is correct and added to the agenda.
Okay. Dr. Lawrence had it.
And that's not a new Tanya Davis practice in two months. That's what was given to me and has been told to me is how they typically happen.
Yeah. I think that almost said it. But Dr. Lawrence, how do, how do people get a job as an adjunct at Stivers if they're not going through HR?
It's been that way as far as I can remember, back when I was the chief.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. There you go. Yeah, we go past practice.
Past practice.
I will say that in our, in our H, in our HR Treasury meeting, we, yeah, came up on our HR Treasury meeting, we are moving to end that practice because we couldn't, we actually were fining adjuncts as the school year went on. So we're ending that practice.
Yeah. I mean, that piece right there, even though this number is here, we have fifty-nine of, for forty-four budgeted positions and of other fifty-nine, only one is not at Stivers. That practice is already kicking us into having to cut some other things to adhere to a process where people aren't actually going through, it sounds like you have to know someone to get into Stivers at this point?
What I do know is that list are the adjuncts that provide supports for the performing arts magnet school that Stivers, School of the Performing Arts is. So many of them are, are covering the services that we need to make sure those students that are there for the performing arts are receiving that specialized, whether it be the visual arts, special tutoring for the music, special ceramics, all of those, the list, because the original list I saw, it would match the actual art pathway that the child has. So where Belmont has it for band, this is for more than just the band and the music.
No, I understand that part. My, my bigger issue is that you guys are over budget. So where are you taking, where are you going to pull from? Hopefully not from someone else in the district to meet this need of the budget. Like, that's the biggest issue I have right now.
Okay.
In addition, that's the, the primary. The secondary is that it's no actual application process for individuals to even openly compete for the job.
I know that Liz Whips, the art director, is the one that provided us with the names. I'm thinking we could find out if she does an application interview, some type of way to verify that they have the skills to provide to the students so they can meet their needs as far as moving through their program.
Do we authorize other non-HR personnel to do hiring?
They don't do hiring. They have to make a recommendation, but this system, we need to get it resolved.
Yeah.
Because obviously, on our end, you're right, we did just get the list from, and provide it to HR to make sure that people were boarded. But that's something we need to work out as far as internal procedures.
Okay.
If I may, from my history as Stivers-
If I may, um, from my history as Stivers, my understanding is yes, there is an application process. They are very stringent about who meets the standards and the qualifications for educating these kids to a very high level of arts education. Um, I've heard over the years of people who have applied to a ceramics position. I watched, um, my kids participate in the application process as student advisors for the orchestra position, the orchestra director position. Now, there's a whole process and at one point in the process, they brought in the student musicians and they had them give input. There is absolutely an application process. There's questions. I would love to invite, um, the principal from Stivers and the Magnet Director from Stivers to come and give the board some fuller information about how that works.
And that would be a good idea, cause it is a very extensive process for those adjuncts.
But it's a process that doesn't include HR.
Exactly. And that's something we need to, to deal with.
Mr. Walker, you're correct. And actually for us, the, the really simple fix is to have, just like athletics, where they have, they do their hiring, uh, they do all their interviews and they keep the materials and they sit in that. We just need to put an HR process in for the adjuncts, district-wide.
So can I tell you my, my pushback on that?
Yes.
The district interviewed the adjunct that's at Belmont.
Say it again.
The district interviewed the adjunct at Belmont.
We did.
You did.
So my, that is, my issue with it is two things. One, it creates more of the conversation or the thought around the lack of equity of a building being able to say, we're budgeted for this amount of positions, but we're still going to go above and we're gonna get this many. Then I do think, to the point that was brought up, that there needs to be some touch with HR on that. Because however stringent the process may be, it still has to be in line with our processes that we do here. Then also, I do believe in what Board Member Walker brought up, in if we are going to be affording children at one school the ability to have specialized personnel to assist and augment their education, then we should be doing the same thing around the district. Where if I can go to one school and I can be in creative writing and I can then have an adjunct who can then work with me in a smaller setting, that should be no different than if I'm at Thurgood Marshall and I'm on the debate team. I should be able to have that same level of specialization in what we do. And I think that is one of the reasons why you get this, this talk of equity. And this is no slight to the people at Stivers. The thing sometimes when we talk about these things, it can look like we're sliding one building, where instead we're saying the rest of this district needs that same kind of specialization.
Equitable.
That is where I look at it and say, yes, I do believe that if we're gonna have a great orchestra program, then maybe I need somebody that can just teach violin or just teach viola or just work here. But if I'm going to have a program at Meadowdale and I'm gonna have a CTE program at Ponnet's, then why do I not get somebody who specializes in automotive to just work with five students here? Like, why do I not bring that? So I think if we're looking at this, then it looks at how do we create it everywhere? Because right now, it, it just looks bad when we say we have adjuncts and all but one are at this one school. So that is just why I would want us as a district to, to look towards how we do those things. Because there are kids all around this district that want that same kind of specialization. And if we're not doing it for them, then we're dropping the ball.
And to piggyback, I would just say, I, I think if it's more of an HR process, then the budget is forty-four, we're not at fifty-nine. And I think that is my biggest thing there too.
Yes, one more question. Um, Madam Treasurer, can you tell us kind of what the budget implications are of that additional amount? Just give us a ballpark of what that number would equate to with those additional positions?
It would run about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand.
Well, and for clarification, we do have specialized teachers in other schools that are full-time.
No, you don't. No, but we don't have them to the where the level of what they're doing. The same way we have specialized teachers at Stivers who are full-time, but they also have adjuncts to work alongside of them, which is why they can have private lessons, why they have smaller groups. We do not have that at our other buildings at to that level.
I'm making the clarification for the public that we do have specialized teachers in schools such as Meadowdale and Ponnet's that are dedicated to that one thing like automotive. They're not adjuncts, but we do have specialized teachers in those schools.
And they have an entire class and those students are not able to leave out of that class and go work with someone else who teaches something specialized inside of that specialty. And I think that is the difference because that is what the whole reason we have adjuncts is for. If we got rid of the adjuncts, then Stivers would look like the rest of our schools. Yes, sir, Mr. Walker?
On this list of adjuncts, D twenty-six?
Left out of there?
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
Yep. Let me just ask, we're gonna ask to vote on, uh, numbers, D twenty-two through D eighty-one separately.
Okay. Separately as a group?
Yeah, as a group. That's fine. Yeah, D, the adjuncts, D twenty-two through, uh, D eighty-one. Dr. Lawrence, I do have a request for you. Since we know that this is going to, uh, put us over budget, can you also let us, can you just give us an update of where we'd be pulling that additional funding forward to support this at our next meeting?
I can.
I don't need to vote on them separately.
I do have a question.
I don't need it. Yeah, we can do them all together. That's fine.
Dr. Davis. Pension withdrawal. I've never seen that.
So, um, there was an individual who retired and I believe he came back and was coaching. He cannot draw from his pension and still be an employee of a district. He needs to separate completely. So we needed to list that as a resignation, so they would see that he is not receiving any compensation from the district to begin drawing his pension.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am?
Historically, these adjunct positions at Stivers, a lot had been funded or were funded in the past by the Seedling Foundation. And I, I'd like, I mean, I think in the past couple of years, has this shifted? Has this changed? Can we, yeah. They still fund a piece of them too, so there are actually more adjuncts than the ones we have here? Or they pay for a portion of this?
They are paying for a portion. They will be helping and I'll get the details of that.
I think it would be good for the board to understand the history and just some clarification around it all. Especially as we're looking to bring equity across the board to our, to our buildings to understand what this looks like. I mean, I'm, you know, I've seen the value of having adjuncts in these programs over the years. Both of my kids attended Stivers and I think that we all recognize what a rich, beautiful program Stivers creates and what they offer. Uh, but just using that as a model as to the success that can happen as a result of having forty adjuncts. And as we vision our buildings and our education model moving forward, I think it's something that we should look at a little more broadly in terms of how can we fill gaps in this way by creating better programs, the way Stivers has done. Uh, so I think that historical look at all of that could be really valuable to us.
And the Seedling Foundation is still involved with providing support for the adjuncts and we'll get more details about that.
Perfect. Thank you.
One more question. Is that the foundation that came to present to us earlier this year? Where they pay, they pay over, when we exceed fifteen?
Yes.
So what we're budgeted for is the fifteen, but when they go above that, and Madam Treasurer, the fifteen is what we're budgeted for. Cause yeah, so we did get a presentation from the, uh, Board Member.
That was fifteen hours.
Yeah, cause we were actually talking about, which we never did get the follow-up to on the fifteen-hour limitation of it.
Moving in the part-time employees.
Too, and what that would be.
And, okay, final question for me on this one. What's the difference between the arts director at Stivers doing adjunct recommendations instead of it coming from the academic coordinator with HR, academic coordinator for fine arts? Since, doesn't that fall underneath that umbrella or is it totally separate?
The academic coordinator supports the, all the secondary schools and works collaboratively with the arts director, but she takes the lead on vetting and, um, actually examining and approving the adjuncts at Stivers for that specialized program. And then the academic coordinator for the other schools handles the adjuncts for them.
So the academic coordinator doesn't do anything with Stivers? They just do all the other buildings?
She does do things with Stivers, but as far as the selection and examination of the potential adjuncts, that's handled by the arts director.
Okay. Final question for me. I see that there are some adjuncts that resigned that is on this list. Will those positions go back to Stivers or will those be other building adjunct positions?
That's a conversation that we're gonna have an academic core. I can't answer that definitively right now.
Any other questions? All right. I think you're good right now, Dr. Davis. Seeing no other questions. Dr. Goodwin, did you say you wanted to vote on a piece separately?
I changed my mind because I just asked how they were gonna, uh, make this shirt fall up. We're not gonna put that front. And just requested that at the next meeting.
All right, appreciate it. And may we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Uh, next recommendation, I recommend the approval of the following supplemental appointments.
So move.
Second.
Moving second. Any questions?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
For number twenty-six and twenty-seven, do they have performance requirements? Particularly twenty-seven, cause I, I, I am interested in what, uh, what the international school does for performances.
Uh, the requirements that they have are, are how monocurricular standards that they have to meet and so.
For the supplementals?
Yeah, we still, yeah, we still use those to frame what they're gonna be doing as a baseline. But you asked me like, is it like five performances or four, three?
No, I just want them to perform. I love to see them out there. I'm excited to see that there are three bands on here. Or four actually on here, so that's really good. But would lo- love to see them out and interested in where they'll be at. Particularly the one that doesn't kind of have sporting events either.
Dr. Goodwin, I don't know if they go out. I was invited to go see a performance of theirs at the end of the school year last year. It was fantastic.
The international school?
Yeah, it was really wonderful.
Yeah, they do several performances and they actually go out, they have a little marching band. And they performed at the Bradford Pumpkin Festival last year. So they go out and perform.
Well, we see, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
They do, they go out and perform.
Will we get to see any of these bands in the children's parade?
I'm not sure, but we can find out.
Can I just request if, I mean, it's very few parades in our area that are during our school year and that is just one of them. I know it's over the Thanksgiving holiday.
The Thanksgiving parade, yeah.
It would be really nice to see DPS represented at that piece, if possible.
Yeah, but the international marching band, they've performed in a couple of parades and we'll pass that on.
Any other questions?
Yes. Um, Dr. Jones, is there an update on the amount of coaching positions that are still left to be filled?
Is that for the, uh, fall or for the rest of the school year? I, I can produce a, I actually have a document I could send the entire board now.
That works.
Okay.
But for fall is, uh, I see a coach on here for cross-country. Is, is cross-country in the middle of their season right now?
I wouldn't say the middle. Um, yeah, close to the middle. Close to the middle. Yeah, it is the middle.
So how, how functioning will that be?
You know, track, cross-country, like Dr. Lawrence, you know, distance running, um, I, I, I think that the, the students deserve, you know, a, a coach. You know, even if it's at this point in the school year, uh, they can make significant improvements within, you know, the next couple of weeks.
Any other questions for Dr. Jones on this up? You good, Dr. Jones? Appreciate the shirt. Appreciate you. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, then we have a vote.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Dr. Lawrence?
Uh, memorandum of understanding DEA long-term subs, it is for review today.
All right. Any questions?
One second. So this, and just so, cause long-term stuff has got a lot of questions, this will not impact any of our long-term subs prior to July, I mean, September one, and this expires also, which with the normal DEA contract on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, correct?
Correct. We took one off, uh,
Yes.
And we're gonna put them back on, well, we took an individual off because they have a PhD and we're gonna put them back on Tuesday, is that right? So that they're in line with this memorandum of understanding. The one that had a PhD and I said, take, uh, pay them the BA. BA one.
That was for anyone hired after the MOU. I think the MOU effective date is September first, so anyone coming in after that will be, but anyone that we've already brought in, we're not going back changing anyone.
Okay, all right.
And it does expire June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five until a new agreement is put in place, correct?
Yes, this is, yeah, expires June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Any other questions? Dr. Lawrence?
I recommend approval of the following resolution, retroactively approving employment and payment for staff, and that's for a vote.
So move.
Second. Moving second. Any questions?
Can you tell me why we're retroactively paying individuals?
Yeah, we, we have, uh, over the last, yeah, maybe year or so, we've missed people. There are adjunct drivers on here. We missed dates and deadlines for submission for line J B A. We've missed, um, anniversary. Yeah.
Do we have amounts of what this is? Are we just blatantly saying that we owe people funds?
Well, these people are in the agenda as well. And so I have to look back and see if they're in there for them out, but I know they're in the agenda. See some names now that are in the previous HR agenda.
And if it's discovered that some of these adjuncts did in fact resign, they, will they be pulled from this list as well?
I don't think I'm understanding you. The list that I was given is brand new as of Wednesday, where she verified that these people are indeed going to be serving these. I understand that you're saying they may have resigned from being an adjunct previously, but this is a current list, so perhaps I'm misunderstanding.
I mean, yeah, there, there, some of these resignations came in like June or July. I just remember seeing these names. But if, I don't know if they're back, cause I don't know how they even started working here together. But I'm just saying, in the event that those people are not in fact working for us, will they be pulled from this? I don't want to pay individuals who don't actually work for us. That's all I'm asking. That if you guys discover.
These individuals are not paid unless they submit something, so they wouldn't be paid anyway. However, I understand what you're saying now. If they, I'm hoping that I wasn't just recently given incorrect information. That would be problematic.
Okay. So yes, they wouldn't be paid if they aren't there. But like you said, they have to submit something to get paid, correct?
They have to do time card plus.
I believe they submit an actual pay sheet to get paid, cause they're not in time.
And they do a sheet? This is a good gig to have.
You can check with the treasurer. I don't know what that looks like.
You ain't gotta apply nowhere for real. He write down over here.
They actually submit a paper sheet to payroll that doesn't come through HR. And so, um, what I'm sharing is that yes, if these people are not indeed working and the list that I was just given two days ago is incorrect, I will remove them from the agenda. I am hoping that the information I was just given two days ago is not inaccurate.
Do we have any other employees in this district that work for us that receive payment from us on a paper sheet, to your knowledge? And if you don't know, let me ask.
I'm not a payroll.
I'm not sure. No.
No, no, no. So why are these individuals different?
The only time we use paper sheets is if we have corrections, like, you know, if, let's say someone forgot to clock in or holiday leave wasn't put in or vacation leave, so then the manager will send in a paper sheet so we can pay them for that missed hours. Otherwise, it's all time clock plus. Now, the issue I think stems from, they're not boarded by HR, so they're not in our system. So if they're not in a system, they can't be fingerprinted for time clock plus.
So they don't even have background checks? If they're not boarded by HR, so we don't have fingerprints for them to get time? I mean, there are a ton of issues coming stemming from this.
I did not speak to anything that happens with adjuncts. As I shared with you a few moments ago, I was given a list on Wednesday and that was told to me as that's the practice it has been, that HR receives this list and we add them to the agenda. I do not know these individuals. I do not know what process they go through in terms of background check, application, resume, anything.
Okay, so let me ask the board members here because we don't even have volunteers in our district without a background check. It's, we possibly just boarded individuals that haven't gone through any of our formalized processes to ensure that not only that we are protecting our kids based on things we know. Does that sound logical to the rest of you all?
Can I, if there's a question about this, can we have somebody make a call right now to find the answer to that question?
Yes, please.
Because I would hate to leave that unanswered. I would assume that proper legal procedures were followed.
Chief, right here.
Our Dr. Lawrence, can you call Ms. Whip if that's the individual who is handling this process?
Well, in, looking at this list, these names are all the ones that were on the HR agenda today. So this is just because they started work prior to the date. This is just making sure that they get paid for starting that day.
Correct, because as I shared, it's a systemic issue that we're finding. It's not an individual where we can penalize one person for not submitting names. This is a practice here where we're just finding things out and we want to make sure that we're not continuing to violate board policy, which is why Dr. Lawrence had reached out to legal to do the resolution, acknowledging that we understand that this is a violation of board policy. So we wanted to do a resolution for that as we're cleaning this practice up.
Now, my other question would be, these individuals that are listed on this list, have they been paid anything yet? Or this determines if they can get paid, return back to that?
I can't speak to that.
No.
I have an answer for that. Sorry, I was on the phone.
I just called Ms. Whips and she said, yes, they definitely go through BCI, background checks, everything before they come in. It's just standard procedures. She said two of the long list, that all of them have been here for many years except there are only two new ones, but she puts them through the full process that we do with all other staff members.
Okay.
That way you guys can feel rest assured on that one.
I don't think I'm rest assured. I think for me, my question is, who, who determines when someone starts prior to board approval?
That's what we're discovering where it doesn't seem to be widespread knowledge that subs end at the end of the year. And so a building, if you've used to, if you're used to having a particular sub, they invite that sub back as though that's a regular employee. And so that's where I'm saying, we're trying to clean up the practices and the systemic lack of knowledge in the district because we are finding out that, oh, this sub started, we only find out because they're reaching out to payroll for pay and we're saying, hey, you've never been placed on the board agenda, so that's why you don't have a check. And so it's honestly, it's just us finding out things at the last minute that someone has been invited to start. These adjuncts, they have, some of them have indeed started with seeing our children. I just got the list Wednesday, so it's really as we're finding out people reaching out to get paid and then we find out you've never been placed on the agenda because you've never reached out to HR to be placed on the agenda. So we're doing our best to try to clean this up.
Any other questions?
Like the ones, the ones that are on the board agenda, you just approved it for those adjunct, we are holding the checks until you approve it. So after you approve it today, we're going to give, pass the checks.
Okay.
My, my follow-up to that is, before coming onto this board in January, this, this body passed a resolution in December that stopped the practice of starting people prior to board approval. So I'm curious as to, Dr. Lawrence, we are in September and this practice still continues.
Yeah, it does. And it wasn't as simple as just the resolution. As the piece around adjuncts, I think is a demonstration of just the rollback to try to fix and manage things that historically been incorrect. And that, that really is one of our biggest things this year. I said it's the two things for me, make sure everybody gets paid and make sure all 25, 50 employees that are in this district, that they actually exist and are where they're supposed to be.
So going forward?
There will be at least one or two more of these because we're still, we continue finding.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
All right. So go back to the treasurer's thing. So what you're saying is this is approved so people can reach out and pick up checks on Monday that have been printed and everything.
Yeah, those, that list, you approved it? Yes.
Good.
Yep.
All right. May we have a vote?
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Before you do that, can I ask if you can do all of those?
I was getting ready to.
Yeah.
I was going to say H through P. Those are all our partners that are working on this same thing, high dosage tutoring. So you can look through those and ask questions today, prepare, or you can ask them via email.
So I did have a question on these, on the Dayton Urban Young Life and EM2G. A lot of the language that is in that MOU is also in the other ones. So I guess it's EM2G is that serving as the principal, I guess, agreement and the other ones are sub, working with them or? Give you an example.
Yeah, thank you for the question because they are all aligned. All those organizations will be working with our high school students to provide tutoring. And one thing we want to do is make sure there's high quality tutoring and alignment across the board. So Brunner Literacy organization will be doing the training of all those tutors to make sure everything is consistent and it's high quality. So you'll see the extraordinary, the EMG, extraordinary male mentoring program, which is a summer camp, Urban Young Life, the WISE organization, all of those will be trained by Brunner Literacy to provide high quality tutoring, working with our high school students.
So on the WISE Educational Services MOU, it references, WISE will offer physical space to support any tutoring, reading, or program service that may not be available on site at EM2G or provided in a partnership. But then on the Dayton Metro Library, Dayton Metro Library will provide book mobile services at EM2G.
Yes.
So I think, yeah, my question is, EM2G, is this like the principal, like prime contractor at this point? And then the other ones are the sub that just want to work with EM2G?
There, it's a after-school collaboration, a collaborative. So they all work collaboratively together and that's where you see if the kids don't have space at one, they could use WISE. Everyone's trained under Brunner Literacy. The original MOU was Brunner Literacy with all of them listed, but we were advised to list them separately so you can see all the agencies that are involved.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I had information for you in regards to B23, Jeremy Miller, he is going from Kaiser to Ludlow. That's what that was. So he was being moved from the math specialist in the building to now serving throughout the district. So that's why that change was, that was an error in terms of the location, saying Ludlow to Ludlow, which should have been Kaiser to Ludlow. And then for B22, she is a gifted art. The change was the split. So instead of it being from Horseman and Fairview, she's now serving Horseman and Roosevelt. So she continues to be gifted art.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question for you real quick.
On the?
You can go first.
Okay. On the B23, the salary of that one?
That was a question. Okay, I'll check that.
Okay.
Is there a change in it at all or like?
Well, because like on the, on the salary schedule for specialists, it says 50 something. On this, it says math specialist secondary, 89,000. So I'm just curious on, is this a DEA position that's different than what's on the salary schedule or is this, what is this salary piece of it?
They're finding that information, but with this being a teacher contract, he could be master's 30, step 20. So it's not a specialist salary. This is a teacher contract, a teacher on special assignment essentially. So his salary would be whatever placement he is on that salary step, not the administrative specialist salary.
I need plus three, step seven.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming it's Super Bowl.
I'm not asking that.
All right. Any other questions? Those, if you look through, reach out. Dr. Lawrence, on you now.
President Smith, I'd like to ask the board to look at contracts and consulting contracts together and we will take questions there for review only.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You took it off. I think, Dr. Jones, you took it off. X-tick.
Hold on, sir. This one's not.
Oh, okay. I'll come back to that one. On these consultant pieces, on the consultants, what is the evaluation process when these consultants are used? And because I believe that this is a new practice of basically the mentoring, coaching, and leadership courses for principals, but what's the status of how effective was it last year? What's the proof that it was effective?
We collect multiple different types of evidence to really verify, is this working? Is it worth bringing back? Their principals are under an OPEZ evaluation and we have growth plans and pre and post assessments. The training and coaching that the mentors provide significantly help those principals grow. We're in a situation where we have many principals that have two or two years or less experience and it's a very complex job and we know we need to provide a little bit more than the professional development that we provide so that one-on-one coaching helps. We look at metrics such as their scores, test scores, grading practices. We look at discipline records. We look at information on how they prepare, if they have to go to an expulsion hearing, things like that, multiple things that principals are responsible for.
So what's the purpose of the chief and the executive directors for primary and secondary schools?
They provide the evaluation, but in a new position, a lot of times you need a mentor coach, somebody who may not be that formal person. It's definitely needed. Best practices under the Walden Foundation where they talk about training principals is one of the most complex jobs out there. They recommend to have multiple people to support them.
Does any other admin personnel have a coach similar to the principals or is it just principals? Because a lot of the admin are one or two years in as well.
As far as?
I have one. You do?
And, and we have internal admin, we have people that mentor and coach each other all the time.
Okay, so last year, this came on for the board and there were four or five different coaches. What, I guess, what, what was the feedback from the principals that had them as a coach?
We collected narratives. We did a, we did two things. We did a survey, which was anonymous where they could give us feedback. We did that mid-year and then we had them do a summary at the end and got really good information about the, the benefits, the strengths of how they felt. And it was effective. We had a lot of principals that have really improved their skills. We're now assessing, we've got a couple more. We don't have as many mentors identified this year, but we do have a couple that we think could benefit from one, so we're still assessing that.
Okay, if possible, I would like to see that data. And my next question is, I see as far as providing expulsion hearing services, but from my recollection, there's two individuals who that duty is in their job descriptions. So what is that actual service that is going to be provided?
So we've, we've had an increase enrollment and we've had an increase in the complexity of families coming in, whether it's a group home child or foster care, McKinney-Vento, as well as our ESL population, everything's growing. And we had that expulsion hearing under our enrollment director's role and that's way too much work for one person to do quality work. We also recognize having new administrators. We need to really do some heavy training on interventions, behavior interventions at the building level and when and how to bring someone to an expulsion hearing, making sure they've done all they could for that child before it gets to that level. And we need an expert to do that. So this person isn't only running the hearings, he will be providing job embedded training at the principals' meetings about how do you go through the due process? What are things that you should do in lieu of expulsion? And by the end of the year, we want a whole principals force that is proficient in that and right now we don't have it.
And this individual retired from this role in this district.
But we're bringing him back more as he'll be doing the hearings, but also training our principal force in that whole process.
Okay. And then, thank you. The last question I had was for treasurer. For consulting services, I mean, why not just post the position?
Until we, we posted it already, until we post, but we lost two of them, one senior accountant, the other one is executive. So we, we called the, the person who was on that seat to help us with the work.
So if you hired these two positions within the next month, what happens to the 45,000?
The 45,000?
Yeah.
If we hire and trained that person, we, we don't have to pay it, but it will take time to train the person because the person just left us.
So, so is it really an hourly figure that's not to exceed 45?
It's not an hourly, it's just weekly.
Okay.
Yeah.
How often are you going to use them through the week?
Three days a week.
I'm in the wrong profession. Okay. Oh, I will say, I am glad to see Ms. Thomas on here.
For sure. We are too.
Any other questions?
Under contracts, on the very last line, Sinclair Community College, there's just a misplaced typo.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Right.
Do you have something, Dr. Goodwin?
Yes, I just wanted to have a request on kind of what the consultant, the ones that come out of general fund, what percentage of our budget consultants account for? So in finance, I learned recently, again, that 72% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So I'm just interested on the people side of the individuals who don't work outside of here, what percentage of our budget are we spending towards consultants? And if I, if I can just get that at the ne- by the next meeting, please.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Ain't none? Is that all you got, Dr. Lawrence?
That is it for me today, that concludes my recommendations and reviews.
All right, appreciate you, sir, Madam Treasurer.
Okay, all of my recommendations are for review. Okay, we'll go to certificate of estimated resources. And um, okay, uh, general, we start with, this is a permanent uh uh budget we're going to have, because we were working on the temporary, now we're making it a permanent. So if you go to that detailed one second page on that certificate of estimated resources, there is a detail um which starts with unreserved ban- uh balance for July one, twenty twenty-four, and it goes from where we get the um resources. So general fund, we ca- we are carrying hundred twenty-one point eight million. We're going to, we estimated what we're going to receive from taxes is seventy-five million. From other sources, likes the, from the state and from interest income and miscellaneous, we are estimating it hundred sixty-eight point nine million. So the total resources for general fund is three hundred sixty-five point eight million. We'll go to special revenue. As a total, we're showing a negative of six point four million, but it's not negative. We requested money and uh it, since these are um grant funds, we'll receive the money. So uh for special revenue funds, seven hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred seventeen from taxes. That is from that half a mil levy we get. And the other sources, from other sources, since these are grant funds, we will get ninety-two point nine million from all these funds, from the grants, mostly it's grants. And the total uh resources is going to be, we estimate in it eighty-seven point one million. We'll go to debt service fund. In our debt service fund, we're starting with twenty million, twenty point nine million. We are estimating from taxes to receive thirteen point four million. So the total resources is going to be thirty-four point four million. We'll go to capital project, that is fund OO three permanent improvement. We start in eight point seven million. We're going to receive from taxes from that half mil, seven hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred seventeen. And from other sources, one point three million. That other one is what we did is um, since um S R funds are uh closing, we got, we are transferring and we putting it into that. Okay, we'll go to enterprise funds. Enterprise funds, uh, we're starting with twenty-three point nine million. Uh, we estimated to receive uh thirty-four million, no, fourteen point one million. The total is thirty-eight point one million. This is mostly food service fund. Internal service funds, we started with thirty-five million. We plan to receive thirty-four, and the total balance is going to be sixty-nine million. We'll go to trust and agency fund. We started with five point nine million, estimating to receive revenues sixteen point nine million. Twenty-two point eight million is the resources. Private purpose trust, which is our OO seven fund, special trust. We start in with two hundred forty-three point four million. We are estimating to receive sixty, no, for three hundred forty-three thousand four hundred forty-six. We are planning to receive sixty thousand, and the total is going to be for that fund, three hundred three O three four four three. So the total, what we started is two hundred nine point six million. Taxes eighty-nine point nine million from other sources, which is grants for state and et cetera, three hundred twenty-eight point four million. So the total estimated resources is six hundred twenty-eight million. So we will go to appropriation, this is certificate of estimated resources, since they go together, I'll go to uh the appropriation portion of this. Because we have to budget according to what we have, so. So if you click on that um under the executive uh content, appropriation, all funds, it will show you the detail on that one. The same, it goes like that, our appropriation for general fund is two hundred sixty-three point nine million. And um for s- special revenue, fifty-six point seven million. For debt services, thirteen point four million. For capital projects is nine point four million. For intr- enterprise funds is seventeen point three million.
I have a question on this one.
On?
Yes, on the appropriation, it's more for the superintendent though, under fund five A four, title four. We talked about maybe two board meetings ago about the band uniforms, and we just approved the four individuals, just kind of wanted to see if you guys had any movement on finding the funding for that program?
I'll have to ask Ms. Minor about those band uniforms in the shop.
Ms. Minor, we're cool in the building. So excited for you.
We are still searching for funding for the band uniforms. Uh, we do have our Dayton foundation that we're partnering with that may be able to provide half. Um, but the S R dollars that we use to purchase instruments and all of that is no longer available. And we did, do have a significant change in the amount of grants funds we have. So that's where we are.
Title four is what the fund.
Title four is totally maxed out. We were able to use title four to help us offset the cost of some of the positions that were out of S R, so we did not lay anyone off, but that took the title four funds. That's where that happened, so you kind of picture that.
I mean, it's this conversation, like, I already, I think we need, I mean, I'm excited that we're looking for an internal auditor, but with our salary so high, now we got people losing resources and things, like, we have three programs, one that's in its third year, two that's in their second, or three in their second year, and they still don't have uniforms. And our ROTC programs, they operate with uniforms. All of our sports programs operate with uniforms, and it's, it's just a little ridiculous that.
Yeah.
We, and then, as we talked today, you guys also have to find an extra three hundred thousand for the adjuncts and stivers, whereas our poorest schools, again, Belmont, Dunbar, Thurgood, International School, we can't buy them uniforms. Like, that's problematic, and I, I just don't think it's acceptable that we're asking other places to do the bare minimum for people to be able to participate beyond playing at their school, to have a uniform in a program that we're saying is a district-sponsored event.
And we'll definitely continue to work with the treasurer's office to try to get the funds for it.
I mean, it's a, I think it is a hard look at what we have going on and where we can trim at, because as, as you guys say all the time, what do you say? You have a saying here, what do you guys say about children? What's best for children, is that what you guys say? Is that the, in that verbiage?
You close.
What, what, I mean, y'all say it, I'm asking.
Yes, what's best for children, all means all, yes.
So, so those pieces right there, and I know as you two are sitting up here with the rest of us, that we know it is not best for children who are in the third year or second or first year in a program, to not have a basic, a basic piece of that program, meaning the uniform, that means I belong here. So we have to, I mean, we're gonna have to cut somewhere else to figure out, I mean, even, we just talked about it. I know that those consultants are important to you guys, but if it's a consultant or buying a kid a uniform, because that's general funds, then we really got to start making some real decision on which one matters more to us for that child's experience with us.
Yeah.
And especially if you're saying you've maxed out all grants that could have helped, because we're now back in general. If it comes down to, we're giving up this so we can have that, I mean, I think not only you all, but us as a board, we have to challenge more to make sure that we keep you guys on some of these things that are slipping under us. That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Okay, the total appropriation for this year for all funds is uh four hundred sixteen million. So from the last m- month, what it was a temporary approved, we added one point three million to a fund uh OO three from the S R's. We adjusted our expenditures and given it to uh capital projects. And um another one is nine hundred fifty thousand dollars is the budget we adding on to this appropriation for the SRO's uh requested salary. Those are the changes we have in this one. Do you have any question on this?
Questions? Say.
I mean, i- and to make, to make a long story short, a lot of it's moving around because of S R's landing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And you will see the transfers in the next.
So, yeah, it's being transferred out of treasury where the money was. Or it was originally budgeted and put to the different departments that formerly used S R money, but now it's, it's coming out of the general fund.
Yes. Okay, if you don't have any question on that, we'll go to the next one.
All right.
Permanent transfer. We are transferring this um one point three million from general fund to permanent improvement, is that uh one point three million?
Any questions?
Okay.
All you, Madam Treasurer.
Okay. Monthly financials, yesterday we had a meeting with the finance committee. The finance committee reviewed it, and we didn't have that much questions on them. And if you have any questions, let's look at it and we'll go from that.
We'll give a moment for those to look and see if there's any questions they have now. If there are no questions, and go on, Madam Treasurer.
Okay. Donations. As always, we love donations, tan- thank you donors. And we have several donations in here, like a dare for McKinney Vento, four hundred thirteen uh dollars worth of items. Goldman, I mean, musicians for stivers, um, one thousand four hundred forty-nine and eighty-one cents worth of items. The same from Goldman for stivers, uh, one thousand four hundred seventy-four and ninety-six cents. Incarnation Catholic uh school, PTO for Cleveland School, uniforms, style knabis and shirt, and uh, what else? Greater Dayton, uh, for teachers, students, and children's need in need supply, worth one thousand dollars. Reynold Walker, Meadowdale High School, uh, one thousand dollars worth of meal. Thank you. Uh, when it's approved, we'll send the thank you letter to the individuals.
So Madam Treasurer, I didn't hear that last one, you said it was Meadowdale High School?
For Meadowdale High School.
First one I've heard in years.
I love our Meadowdale alumni. Any questions, comments?
Next one is purchase requisitions, they are from several departments, let's look at them, and if you have any questions, we will answer together.
Any questions on purchase requisitions?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Uh, an update on X-Tech? Yeah, so this is uh completion of our project to uh bring our legacy buildings uh up to uh the standards of our other buildings, uh in terms of badging, um, surveillance, cameras. Uh, however, after this school year, we will be uh moving away from X-Tech. Appreciate you. Most definitely.
Any other questions?
I did have another one, mine was Turnit LLC, is that right? This is for.
Turnit Inn?
Yeah, Turnit Inn LLC.
Uh, we got feedback from teachers that uh.
Chat GPT.
Yeah, yeah, secondary teachers that we are, well, let me back up. First of all, say, Dr. Curtis Miller is involved right now in studying how we can use AI on the operations, HR, and the entire organization, including academics. But until we uh have a system, systematic framework for how we use AI, cannot be used to write papers. Brother Walker, and so we're finding that's happening, but we gotta, gotta stop.
Appreciate. I, a follow-up to that, will this be used to track teachers' lesson plans that they use? I just, I know what's happening.
We have a meeting, Lisa and I have a meeting with, our first meeting with all the principals on Monday at seven thirty AM, and um, yes, it is happening. It's in the comment, administrators to read the lesson plan, you are correct.
Appreciate.
Say list.
Any other questions on purchase requisitions?
Okay, under the, under the title, less than fifteen thousand, there are several PRs for fifteen thousand.
That's technically not less than fifteen thousand.
I, I, well, what, I guess, what's the policy? Does anybody know? Okay.
Thank you, Sharice.
So they've, they are fifteen thousand and left.
Can we get a report on the below fifteen thousand, on how much we've spent to date with uh individual v- vendors? Cause I'm, I'm interested if people are doing combined spends that exceed fifteen thousand, but you keep chopping it up. The, from January to now.
Any other questions? There are no further questions? Madam Treasurer, does that conclude your recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you, we appreciate you, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
Mr. Business Manager, sir. Mr. Business Manager, sir.
So in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section three, three, two, seven, point zero one and point zero two, I recommend ratification of the following resolution, payment in lieu of two thousand, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
It's for a vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll move.
Second.
Why are you leaving? Somebody might have had a question.
Who's the candidate?
Mr. Lacy?
Lacy.
Mr. Lacy's second. Any questions?
Why is it for a vote tonight?
Is that for a vote?
It doesn't say for a vote, but, but why was it for a vote tonight? What's the urgency today versus Tuesday meeting?
We could move it to Tuesday if you like, but we haven't ready. We've determined which students are impractical to transport, so.
We have roughly about three hundred students that are currently deemed impractical. We're reviewing that list probably the next seven to ten days. It'll come down some, so that's in line with the previous school year. About three hundred students. And it's primarily based on time and distance or just a, a limited number of students at the schools. Those are the, the two of the, the two largest factors of the six that we use to determine impracticality.
Any other questions?
Just a request, when we're gonna vote on stuff, can it be labeled that we're voting on it for a vote? I know, that's what I'm saying. That's why I was like, why is this for a vote tonight? And it wasn't labeled for a vote, because I don't know if someone wanted to speak on it. I just want them to know that prior to us doing it.
Any other questions?
There's no high school on here? Because we just give them, everybody gets a bus pass?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I? Can a high school student be considered impractical to transport based upon disciplinary issues with their usage of the bus pass? No. Okay.
Any other questions?
And I know that there's one school district in Ohio that just was, has a lawsuit that was filed for marking students as impractical to transport. This is because we actually cannot transport due to where they reside and things like that.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm not doing that.
Let's do it.
Dave Yost done.
Seeing none? Maybe we have a vote.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. That concludes your recommendations, Mr. Business Manager. Thank you. Like your ratifications. I like. If you're on. Moving into board business. I recommend approval of board member travel to attend the following conferences. You can see in our content.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right. Before we go into, I think we had one more from HR that had not been voted on yet. Is the board prepared to make a vote on that, or was there any more information needed for board members on that?
Just confirming that the salary was correct.
Think I'm, was the salary on that one was? And the one that we had, we talked about, what was that line that was, let me pull it.
It went up to eighty-nine thousand or something?
Yeah, that's the one.
That was his DEA teacher, uh, because of his step, right?
B, B twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll motion approve B twenty-three.
Second. Been moving second. Any questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, thank you. Down here, Dr. Goodwin, you got anything?
Yes, I do, actually. First, I, I do wanna put a motion to reconsider the salary scale that we approved last week. Basically, because there, there were some things that need to be corrected, so I wanna move to reconsider the salary scale.
Second.
Been moving second. Any questions? Seeing none. Maybe we have a vote.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
So with that, I actually need to put another motion, because I didn't say anything to do other than reconsider it. So I actually, I do want to have a little brief discussion on it. I think as a board, we need to kick it back to our team. I did put, I did share with you guys some stuff that I requested from the team as well. And we just need it to be a lot more solid when it comes out. There were, in my personal opinion, I think we did a disservice in some areas where some people did get a, technically a three percent jump, but they also took a, a one percent loss every three years after that one. And I think that was a big change on some things. I think with our administrators, for the principals themselves, those kind of could have been worked a little bit better. So I also want to make, I'm gonna let you guys say if you have anything, but after that, when I am gonna make a motion to actually reinstate our frees while our HR, our payroll, our business manager, like our leadership team, they actually tell us what they need to do to get this right, because I do think when it comes to how we're moving forward with this salary scale, it has to be equitable and it has to be right more than anything else. And I think we gave them a crunch time and they did give us something back, but it was not as the quality that I, I believe that they can produce when they just let us know how much time they need for it to get it corrected. So if anyone has comments on that, please speak now. I think, I think they need to tell us how much time they need, because we gave them a thing on that piece and, and when we got back, it, it caused the whole lot in our district. So I don't know how much time that they need. And you, we can ask them right now, so they've never, remember, this is a dramatic change from everything that we've done where we just had a yearly one that was similar to our, 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 I can't think what I'm trying to say. It's the yearly thing, it's like the growth every three years was like that to them actually building in a piece. And I actually think it bears more discussion that's just not in this room, because even Board Member Wick had had some thoughts around some other ideas from it. So I do think that not only should they work on it, but board members who have thoughts based on kind of what they see in the workplace should really pop in to be a part of those conversations. So when we do get the thing that, that back, we feel a lot better about it. And we feel like it's something we all can be agreeable on that it is what's, it's best for the staff that we have today as well as for the staff that we're going to have in the future. So I don't, I don't know. I would, I wouldn't wanna put them on the spot today to give me that, but I would ask them, at least by our next meeting, if you can tell us just a ballpark of how much time you think is necessary for you guys to get this right. Would kind of be the request for me. Is that, that sound cool to you? Dr. Bailey?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
All right. So I'm gonna move that we reinstate our salary frees to the twenty twenty-four salary schedule and we give our team time to actually put the salary schedule together. And once we get that and we approve that, that we go ahead and we do compensate individuals from the time from the start of this contract to where they land on the salary scale. That's my motion. Thank you. I said I moved.
Any questions?
So is this like thirty days? Like what?
No, we asked them to come back the next meeting and give us that piece. I don't know how long it's gonna be, but the request was that they tell us at the next meeting about what they're predicting it would take.
Anything else? Maybe we have a vote.
President Smith?
Fine by me, yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reynard?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Got anything else, Doc?
I will say, if you are in the area tonight, tonight is Belmont High School's homecoming, so please go out to the stadium, check them out. You get to see the mighty. It's like two M's though. It's two of them. Mighty marching bisons. I think that's what it is. You get to see the mighty marching bisons. You get to see the football team. The spear shop is open, I believe, until eight, so feel free to go out there. We did put in two where staff members, if you have your badge on you, you do get a twenty percent discount and students get a thirty percent discount. They have their student ID to show that they're there. Please come out, support, supporting the spear shop, definitely supports the kids and all that thing, all that jazz. And I hope you all had a good weekend and, you know, we'll be back at this in a couple of days, so I'll have more then.
Ms. Reynard?
I have a couple of updates. First of all, last month, I was honored to attend a ceremony at the Builders Exchange Award. I believe Superintendent Lawrence mentioned this last month. It was an honor to see DPS and Welcome Stadium get recognized and lauded for the work that we've done at Welcome Stadium. And I'm grateful I could be there. I had the great opportunity to take an official tour of opponents as well, too. I've been opponents a lot, but I don't think I've ever gotten the full official tour. And it was really, really lovely that the amazing, incredible things that the staff is doing there for our CTE program is to be commended. I wish more community members all across the region were able to see what I saw. I even got to go in the new, you know what I'm talking about, Ms. Minor. The new ambulance simulator. It is a complete back-end ambulance and it is on pistons and it has lights and sounds. And I got to go in the back and somebody went in control room and made it feel like we were barreling down a street full of potholes and I feared for my life, so it was a good thing I was in an ambulance simulator. It was incredible and those students are so lucky and it is a really, really remarkable piece of equipment. And I'm really grateful for the priorities and the educational experience that those kids there can have. As far as work outside the district that is still board work, as a member of the Vouchers Heard Ohio Steering Committee, we had a meeting last month. That lawsuit, the trial is set to start November fourth. And we have been part of this process. We are one of the plaintiff districts, one of the six plaintiff districts. We've been a part of this since it started two to three years ago. I was in the room when the concept of this started out in Columbus and I'm grateful to be part of the steering committee. The work and the dedication that people have all across Ohio to making sure that public tax dollars are going to public schools is really, really important. You know, we talk about funding, we talk about need to make sure that our budget is well allocated, but part of that is making sure that we are getting adequately funded from the state government. And if we are spending billions of dollars, public tax dollars on private non-public entities, we're not gonna have the proper funding that we should have. A billion dollars has been spent on vouchers and non-public education. That is enough to fund ten thousand teachers across the state of Ohio. That would more than take care of our teacher shortage. So it is an honor to be a part of the Vouchers Heard Ohio Steering Committee. And we will have one more meeting before the lawsuit, before the trial officially begins, and I'll bring updates as that happens. The Southwest Executive Committee meeting, Regional Committee, Southwest Executive Regional Committee meeting had a meeting in August and I was able to go and meet with other board members across the Southwest area of the state, bringing each other up to date about things that are happening in our districts and making sure that we are collaborating and communicating as, as much as we should be. And the last thing, I have a personal tradition. Whenever I go to a conference, I wear my badge and I, this is my conference badge. This is a special one, though. On Wednesday, I got back from my annual advocacy for public education in Washington DC. And I wanted to share with the public some of the things that we talk about. So the board has gone through the exercise where we talk about local funding and state funding, but we also have federal funding. And that's really relevant to the funding that DPS and other districts across the state have. I am one of the two delegates for this congressional district to go out to Washington DC and meet with members of Congress and meet with senators and have a, an advocacy day on Capitol Hill. The six areas of advocacy, advocacy that we talked about, four of them are the same. We continually advocate for increased funding for K-12 public education. We advocate for fully funding the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act. When this was passed in nineteen seventy-five, almost fifty years ago, the federal government promised that it would pay up to forty percent, forty percent of the mandate to educate students with disabilities. They've only funded up to eighteen percent at its highest. And right now, the nationwide average for funding for individuals, individuals with disabilities is eleven point seven percent. If you think about the money that we are getting from the federal government versus the money we should be getting from the federal government and how we have to, in turn, meet those budgetary needs through our own pockets, that's a huge amount of funding, given that, you know, anywhere between twenty-two and twenty-five percent of Dayton Public Kid, School Kids are on IEPs and are kids with disabilities. That's massive. So I advocate for that every year. Dr. Bailey, one of the items that we advocated for on the Hill this year was increased funding and resources for mental health supports. It is a conversation that we have not just here, not just in the State House, but across the nation. Every single child in this country deserves to make sure that they get the supports that they need for mental health services and supports. We talked about the teacher to principal pipeline. Dr. Lawrence and I have talked a little bit about that over the last little while, making sure that the programs that we have within DPS to build, to grow your own, to build our own teachers from within are as robust as they can be. And then we talked about child nutrition. Two years ago, there was a deadline in, in July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for Congress to extend the child nutrition waiver. This district actually passed a resolution in support of extending that waiver. We are one of, I, I don't know if any other district did, and fairly soon afterwards, I was glad to see that the waiver was extended. We were at that point again. So I would urge the public to understand that, you know, the food that we feed our children in this, in this district is very directly tied to USDA and the Farm Bill and extending the child nutrition waiver. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity that I had to meet with Senator Brown's staff and Senator Vance's staff and Congressman Turner's staff. I am always grateful to know that when I go there, I have conversations with members of Congress, with senators who are in full support of public education, and those are always a pleasure. And I look forward to doing this again next year. That is all I have.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you. To my colleagues, I'd sent the email out with some legislative updates across Ohio, some recent bills that will be taking effect here in October. I think it's really crucial of us to take a look at those and see how they affect us here as a district. I had the opportunity to go to opponents as well and got put on back check duty. I found three phones, just wanna say. So the process there is working. And I look forward to a great school year. Thank you to Dr. Lawrence, Dr. Jones. Um, thank you to Dr. Lawrence, Dr. Jones, Treasure, uh, feel it. Um, thank you all for the work that you do and the team that you all lead and the service that you provide. Thank you.
Appreciate that email, Mr. Walker. And, uh, Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, um, last week, uh, went to a couple of the, um, middle school football games, really enjoyed myself. Haven't been able to get to any of the, uh, high schools yet. Uh, but while I was out there, um, a lot of the parents really commented on how Welcome Stadium had changed and how much they really loved the look of Welcome Stadium. Um, so I thought that was really great and they're looking forward to, um, more events uh, at Welcome Stadium and, and talking to them. They're, they're really proud of what it looks like, uh, and what has been, had, how it's been transformed. Also went up into the hospitality room the other day and it was awesome. And the spirit, uh,
Shop.
shop was, uh, incredible, so I'm gonna try to drive by there today and pick me up some stuff. So, uh, other than that, that's all I have.
It is your school's homecoming.
It is your school's homecoming.
Your school's homecoming, Mr. Lacy?
Dr. Bailey, when they make those comments, you need to take credit for it. Uh, the, the finance committee met yesterday and, and went over August, uh, financial statements and and found them in good order and I'm looking forward to, uh, five o'clock this Tuesday when we have our pre-audit to kick off another audit. The pre-audit meeting.
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Vice President Wick?
Buildings feel great, energy feels great. Thank you to all of our teachers and custodians and nutrition services people and all the people out in the buildings, making them feel good and keeping the energy going. Of course, our administrative staff and leadership. Um, yeah, it's gonna be a great year and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Mr. Business Manager, you have any comments, sir?
I'll be quick, just wanna thank the board for the leadership. Um, and also I'm wanting to thank our operations staff. Uh, we've had some, some snacks. Uh, however, uh, they continue to push forward, uh, they continue to be uh, responsive to, uh, the needs of employees throughout the district. And so, uh, big shout out to operations.
Appreciate that, sir. Madam Treasure?
Treasurer Department is working on, um, working on the compiling our financial report for the audit and the audit is starting next week like, uh, Mr. Lacy said. And payroll was successful today, even though we had a lot of issues. And we are working through it. That's it.
Appreciate it. Dr. Goodwin has something for you, Dr. Lawrence?
I did. On our next board agenda for the certified appointments, can the teachers who are resigning after our date, can that be separated out? Similar to our old model, we have one on here today that we didn't. So that way we have at least a chance to vote on if we are accepting or not.
I was hoping Mr. Smith was gonna respond to this. It was separate out, separated out in that manner and he asked me to change it.
Oh, why you changing stuff?
Was, I'm trying to think what it was.
I can tell you the number right now, like it's.
No, I'm trying, it was something that came up.
The individuals, um, you had information about their personal reasons and things like that. There were medical reasons and things like that, which is why you requested to move it instead of.
Yeah, but we still should have a DEA after July tenth list. If it comes back, if it's a DEA. That's all. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Gil Wright, Mindy Clark, Dr. Davis and my partner Lisa Miner for toughening it out for the four hours. Uh, and I just wanna give a shout out to Philip Morgan. Um, I got a chance to eat lunch the other day. I was out in the streets and I saw President Smith out in the streets and we, we got a chance to shop it up at Philip's Morgan. It's a, um, what is it, like a barbecue joint over there? Yeah, yeah. I'm just riding through the streets and I saw him out walking. I was gonna pick him up, I thought he was walking.
Through the streets one more time.
So, yeah, we had a great lunch here, so good job Philip Morgan. I love your spot.
Uh, I wanna say thank you to everybody. It's been a lot going on in our community. Uh, just wanna extend grace to so many people in our community, extend, extend condolences. A lot of people have been going through a lot of things. I just wanna put that out there, because when these things are happening, sometimes we forget that a lot of these people have children and these children are in our district. And so that means we have more children coming to school, dealing with more things and more issues. So I just wanna put that out there to extend grace to people in these times. Um, and then leading into the fact that we'll be having holidays soon and there are a lot of people whose family dynamics are gonna be drastically different. So just really putting that out there, um, to love on each other. I wanna extend love to our neighbors in Springfield. You do not know, there's been a lot going on, uh, inside the schools, inside government with some of the things that have happened on a national level that then trickles down into local levels and it trickles down into these buildings, so just wanna extend love out there. Um, and that is it.
Motion to adjourn.
So move. Our second.
Hey, he said that's it. It's already a second on the motion.
Seconded though.
President Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.